Nine twenty, we're back in regular session, item number eleven. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance providing that a portion of Montevideo Street be permanently closed and providing that this ordinance shall become effective immediately.
Madam Mayor, there was already a motion on the table that I made for approval.
Let me believe I second.
Renee Rodriguez Sanchez, Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Kono Vialos.
Yes.
Mayor, we'd like to recognize the attendance to the meeting, Commissioner Fitzperez.
Do we go back in order or do we do the the first steps first?
Um, I guess we'll do the do it in order.
Okay.
Yeah.
Someone's sitting here that we just voted on, did the votes pass?
Did we vote it?
Item number eleven, we just took the vote, we just hit the first item.
Oh, okay.
And the motion passed.
Okay.
Can you just explain what we voted on?
Yes, Mr. Perez.
What we voted on was to close the portion of the Montevideo Street that leads toward the back of the Charter School, to be able to reduce the amount of traffic and to ensure the safety of the residents and their ability to access the property.
Item number thirty-two, discussion regarding soliciting political support from city employees.
Would the would the mayor pro temp take the seat at this point?
Yes.
Yes, because yes.
Go. And the and council member number two, tradition two.
Discussion regarding soliciting political support from city employees.
Your microphone, please.
Did you guys hear me?
Mayor. Mayor, ma'am.
Okay, recite it from.
Based on my understanding and the discussion we had in the executive session, uh, look, I know the sense I developed was something along this line. Trying to put it into appropriate motion format. It would be a motion to adopt to instruct the city administration to develop a policy of making back the council board lobby that requires that the mayor and representative Gudon have no communications whatsoever with any employee of the city of Socorro and to require that one hundred percent of their communications about the city be with the city manager and with the city manager exclusively. Uh, with further provision that in the event the council adopts that policy, that the mayor or Mr. Gudon violates that policy, that council imposes a fine on each of them for one thousand, one thousand dollars for each violation. The council launches an investigation into each of them for any similar conduct. Um, and then council undertake efforts to at least explore whether efforts to remove them from office are possible.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And, you know, this this has happened time and time again. Uh, our employees feel threatened, feel that they can't have a normal conversation with us because, you know, they feel that since they're our subordinates, they feel that they have to do and obey whatever we ask them to do. I feel that the census is that, um, our staff feels like they want to move on from the city of Socorro because of 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 their actions. And we want to take necessary steps for that, not only them, but for us as well. Because we are also, uh, uh, need to obey our our rules. We do have, um, we do have policies in in place for that same purpose and yet you fight, you 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 don't care. And it's one of those things that we, if if we don't take care of this, who is? And I've said it time and time again, we are the last people that can actually do something about it to protect not only our staff, you know, and our and our subordinates. You know, they don't, they don't, they want to come to a workplace where they feel happy, they can come and enjoy what they do. They don't want to be walking on eggshells around us, and this is what happening time and time again. We've seen it throughout two years that we've get and we get reminders on our emails, stop talking to staff. I want my staff to know, I want our employees to know that they are in a safe work environment and we're gonna do something about it. I'm sick and tired of getting emails about that. And that's why some of our staff leaves.
Mr. Perez.
Um, I've said this before on this day as various times, we can only control ourselves. And to that end, we should hold ourselves to a higher standard. Um, in terms of First Amendment abilities or what what rights we have, we understand. Politically, you can you can support anyone you want and by the same token, you can decline support of anyone you want. The thing here is that we specifically have things in place that will prevent or should prevent elected members of this body to actively seek support from employees. And in 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 doing that, that puts, once that that question has been asked, will you support me? How will the how will the employee feel if he or she says no? Do I run the risk of retaliation when I get back to the office? And unfortunately, you know, human nature isn't always positive. And so we need to make sure that our employees know that they are supported and that they will be treated professionally and that there is no, there should be no concern of either retaliation or reprisals, that they should not feel threatened in any way, shape or form as to their positions, as to their salaries or as to the conditions of work because they decline to to help out politicians. And that's what it boils down to, helping politicians. Um, we also run the risk of putting them in a situation where they're asked to provide support during work hours. That is impermissible as well. All of us have policies at our workplace about political activism and political participation during work hours. That doesn't, that 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 is, that is unethical and is impermissible. So I just want to contextualize what this discussion is about, and that's what it is.
So that, I guess we need to.
Mayor, we have a question. No, I I was just gonna tell our employees that we realize the hard work that you've you put to make the city what it is now, what it wasn't before. We know, we're different, and we should act that way. Thank you.
Miriam Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. I'll just say I I'm surprised by, um, what the topic is about. I was thinking that there was gonna be some sort of policy talked about, uh, you you guys. Which is surprising though because, um, I believe there is a policy, as you've said, in place. And so, um, it's unfortunate, uh, what I'm what I'm listening to, what I'm hearing. And, um, um, I hope we can be better, continue to make city of Socorro better.
Renee Rodriguez. Do you want to make a motion to allow Mr. Turan to speak?
No.
Renee Rodriguez.
Aye.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Kono Vialos.
I think everybody has the right to speak, I say no, whether they're right or wrong.
This is the motion to that Mr. Maldini's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was to suspend the rules, I apologize, yes. Thank you.
I I think there's misunderstanding.
Oh, we can move to, uh, could we move to item number, like, twelve? No, 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 we we we're still doing.
Thirty.
Uh, thirty, thirty-three.
Discussion and action on update to Mayor Eliar Garcia's investigation.
Jim, that's you again.
Yes, John, you said it.
Yes, sir.
Um, again, based on, um, you were asking questions in in the executive session about legal options and based on your city managers, on the city administration's request, I think an appropriate motion would be to authorize, how about, could I send that to the city court or the city?
Uh, you send it to, uh, Ms. Rolandke. I don't give a.
Oh, great. I would say a motion to set a deadline of tomorrow for the mayor to provide satisfactory answers about her communications with municipal court staff relating to persons she represented as a lawyer. And if she does not do so, to authorize the city's outside legal counsel that is already engaged to file suit against the mayor to secure those answers and seek other appropriate relief. And to state that the city does not endorse the mayor or any other candidate for political office.
That's, that's. For item thirty-four.
Oh, no, that's for the, that's for item.
Thirty-four.
Number thirty-four, we're in thirty-three.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the first part, the first part, that, to to a motion to set the deadline, to set a deadline of tomorrow for the mayor to provide satisfactory answers about her communications with municipal court staff relating to persons she represented as a lawyer. And if she does not do so. And if she does not do so, to authorize the city's outside legal counsel that is already engaged to file suit against the mayor to s- to secure those answers and seek other appropriate relief.
That'll be my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second. Do we have any speakers?
No. Well, just.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Um, this, this investigation has been going since July. Um, it's it's been a back and forth, uh, we've been getting the runarounds. I think that it's time for that the public know what's really going on and if, uh, and they haven't been forthcoming. So I think that we have to do our due diligence because it is over, you know, a ridiculous amount of time for this investigation just to answer some questions. So I I strongly believe that we should take these steps. If, uh, we don't get an answer by tomorrow, I think that we should just go and file suit, and that's what we're doing. And hopefully, it passes.
Renee Rodriguez.
Aye.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Kono Vialos.
Yes.
Motion for number thirty-four now.
Discussion and action to determine if the use of city hall's parking is prohibited for political events.
Jim?
Yes, yes, sir. Again, you asked me a number of questions in in the executive session about the city's legal options. Based on the most commonly asked questions, I would submit this as proposed motion. A motion to adopt a finding that the mayor improperly used city assets for personal benefit and violated City Policy Number Thirty-five and to demand that the mayor reimburse the city for the cost of that use in an amount of, like, dollar sign blank. And to state that the city does not endorse the mayor or any other candidate for political office.
The amount should be four hundred dollars, that's my motion.
Second. And we have a speaker for this item. Ms. Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. The only thing I'll say, and I hate to harp on Mr. Perez because I like you. Two years I've been appointed to the Ethics Commission. Two years have passed without an Ethics Commission being active. Two years, so many things have happened that I believe the Ethics Commission could be saving the city and and this body and our time. We've been here several hours waiting for you guys to come back out, and I understand there's very important things that you needed to discuss, but I really hope that we can appoint the last person that needs to get appointed to the Ethics Commission and that we can move forward with that commission because I think that would save a lot of time, a lot of money, um, and a lot of, I mean, just a lot of heart headaches, so, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I totally agree with you. Uh, these are issues that we've been seeing a pattern of broken policies and procedures, and it just continues on and carries on. And I think that it's time that we actually use that commission because it'll serve its purpose. Because basically, it just sounds like we're just getting away with murder and nobody's here to tell us anything. And that's why we bring it up, so that we can start already doing this. Like I said, I don't endorse, the city itself doesn't endorse any candidate. And the reason why is because they took a picture in front of our doorstep with the city of Socorro on the top. And, you know, it it time and time again, I do not and cannot understand how I can wrap my head around it when you're an attorney, you should know the law, and you keep violating the law for your own personal gain or your own personal enjoyment. You know, these are things that that we have to address, and this is where it stops. We have to show our residents that we are gonna do the right thing, and we're not gonna let anybody get away with anything.
Ms. Vialos.
I think the city of Socorro has been through a lot. I've only been in the city sixteen years, and I've seen a lot in sixteen years, and that's one of the reasons why I'm up here, to try to make a difference, to try to make the change that we, Socorro, needs. We can't do it alone, we need to stick together, we need to do it together. But we need to stop running Socorro through the mud. It needs to stop, and it's very easy. All you have to do is ask, may I, can I? Just three, three, um, letters, I mean, three words. And so, let's just stop. Let's think of Socorro and the constituents, let's stop wasting their money on silly, ridiculous gain for yourselves. Let's think of the city, let's put the city first. I know that's what I do every single time, and I hope that everyone else up here does too. The city of Socorro can be so great, and when something like this happens, first thing they say, there goes Socorro again. And we're not that city, we haven't been that city. We're trying to get out of that mentality. So I ask that every single one of us today, forward, moving forward, let's do the right thing for our citizens every single time. Even though sometimes our citizens don't think the best of us because they forget that we have policies that we have to follow. I love Socorro, I don't want to leave, and I'm not from here. Thank you.
Mr. Turan.
You know, there was a lot of, a lot of facts that were left out. Uh, the original rally was supposed to be at La Purissima Catholic Church. And the day before, and Ms. Rolarte can attest to that fact, the priest says that, uh, no, we can't, we can't have it there. But yet other candidates were having it in front of churches. So scrambling, um, it was a Saturday, there was, who are you gonna ask? Nobody. The pub, the parking lot was perceived as public because another gentleman uses it for for his car wash business. So it was perceived as public. There's no deep, you know, conspiracy here that, uh, it was going to be, it was planned and and to use, uh, city, you know, city property. And so, I mean, you know, none of that was brought out. I mean, it was all because it was, nobody was allowed, and I was not allowed to speak either. So I am allowed to speak on this item because I know what's, I know what went on. I mean, um, Ms. Vialos, you talked about having things fair, but you were in the middle of a controversy a few years ago. Politics brings out the worst.
Jim.
Politics brings out the worst. I'm just saying, I didn't. So, thank you. It does bring out the worst in in everybody, and so people take sides and right away they want to bring somebody down. That's, that's the, the norm. So, I mean, you're you're sitting there talking about, um, that it was planned. It was not planned, it happened because the the pastor at Socorro, after he did give permission, he took it back. So, I mean, as far as that, uh, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Rodriguez.
And this is the guy who almost, single-handedly with our mayor, almost, uh, pushed our employees to resign. What he, we'll talk about facts. He's talking about a certain polit- political, uh, uh, opponent that took a picture in front of of San Elizario's, uh, church. But that picture was on the, uh, street, not on the sidewalk and not on par- church grounds. That is public, there's a difference, okay? Second of all, you know, uh, just because they did that doesn't constitute that you have the right to do it without knowing the facts, and those are one of the facts. The other thing is that, you know, it's just a pattern, it's just a pattern. And we need to get away from this, we need to get away from this, you know? I don't, I don't know how many times, I don't know how many times we have to go and bring some, one of us in here. But I will say it again, if we don't do it, who's gonna hold them accountable? Talking about a person who uses our parking lot for his business, hey, I don't see him posting that he's running for a a a, an elected, uh, office. It's totally different, totally different. There hasn't been an opponent that came out here and picketed and and showboated and showcased our building with our name behind it. Nobody has, and that's the truth. It doesn't matter who uses our parking lot, what matters is that you know you cannot use, uh, city property. That's the problem. Is that they continue and there's a pattern, and that pattern needs to stop. That's why these agenda items are here, because they don't care. It's just that simple.
Mr. Perez.
Um, and I don't want to talk just for the sake of hearing myself, but I will repeat this. Um, we need to hold ourselves to a higher standard. We, whether the word is, the connotation is negative or positive, we are politicians. And perception counts. If, uh, and and I agree, I don't think there was a big conspiracy, I don't. But what I do think is that more thought should have been put into pro- in the process of the announcement. Uh, just the fact that the the city of, the Socorro Mission is a religious site, the the Diocese has policies about the perception of endorsing any one candidate. They will usually use maybe one of the, uh, an organization like Episo to bring all the candidates in, and then they have their say. But having said that, I think that we just need to be more thoughtful as to what we're doing in our campaigns. We know, we know better, we know better. And whether it's, uh, an attorney or whether it's a, a, a laborer or whomever, the idea is that we do our research. And if, and if, and if we need to make sure that, that I can, if I, for example, I might have a campaign rally and this comes into question right about this area, go to the city council, go to the city, uh, offices and ask, what's the policy about having something like this? It's that simple. And it's, it, it's not rocket science, we all have a conscience, we all have a sense of what's right and wrong. And I think that we need to be able to tap on that more often. Thank you.
Ms. Vialos.
Um, and I hate to bring this up, but you will not accuse me again of, yes, I was investigated because of four questions that I asked that you called me when you weren't not a representative yet. You set me up, I think you set me up. I was new in politics, and you knew I was new and green. Okay, well, he can. Okay, well.
But you let him do that to her too.
And that's what I'm saying.
Exactly.
Okay, so, to make the long story short, you need to take, be accountable for your actions.
Uh, Jim, can I, um, address item thirty-two as, as, because Mr. Rodriguez brought it up right now?
No.
Well, he, he, uh, he.
No, I don't want to.
Um, I have the floor, Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, he did bring up about having, uh, employees wanting to quit.
Oh, yeah, okay. The, that's, no, the answer, no.
No.
And we're not supposed to discuss that under thirty-three.
Okay.
Under item thirty-one.
Let's move on.
Okay.
Renee Rodriguez.
Aye.
Ralph Turan.
I'm gonna have to abstain.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Kono Vialos.
Yes.
Item number thirty-five, discussion and action on obtaining an injunction to prevent unauthorized activity at the property known as tract four, C seven, block three, Socorro Grant.
Jim, that's you? For thirty-five.
Thirty-five, uh, can, yes, we do. We have seven speakers.
Oh, you need a motion, uh, yeah, I think your, your city man, your city administration is asking for, for authority, um, and I think the authority should be requested would be granted by a motion of the following effect, a motion to, to approve the item and to authorize the city attorney to file suit against the property under the C B O.
So moved.
Second.
What, what is it?
We have several speakers on this item.
Oh, okay, go.
Tom Hick.
Gosh, I was thinking, I wondered if I could get to talk again.
Gosh, I was thinking, I wondered if I could get to talk again. Uh, interesting conversation prior to our deal. I sought legal representation pertaining to this issue that I'm dealing with. And I, under advice, I sought out an attorney and I told him the situation. He said, no, I'm not touching that. Socorro is so corrupt. And he turned us down and, and gave us our, our deposit back. So it's interesting about what you discussed earlier. Socorro does have a very bad reputation.
Sir, we're, uh, posted for thirty-five, so you need to refrain your comments to item number thirty-five only.
As far as item thirty-five is concerned, we in the neighborhood have long been battling the noise, the confusion, the, the pollution, the use of a piece of property that is not recognized as a commercial truck facility. We've protested, we've, we've filed petitions. We've been in front of you guys, uh, for two to three different times to express our, our complete dismay at what's happening at the corner of Burton Horizon. Uh, earlier I, I gave you the, the, uh, the numbers of the-
Mr. Hick, your time is up.
Thank you.
Lorena Rodríguez?
Hi, I just wanted to let you know once again, we have been battling this for, for too long. I'm just requesting that we, um, put an end to this. Uh, they're not supposed to be using that property as we know, under your ordinance. I hope we could follow that and I hope you vote for us. Um, that's really all I have to say. We've, we've, the neighborhood has been through so much and we are tired, we're exhausted. And I hope we don't have to revisit this. Thank you.
Hat Cardea? Guillermo Gandara Jr.? Ray Portugal?
You know, you guys are up here and you're bickering between yourselves. You're saying you're wasting time. I'm a taxpayer. It's the Coral district. I pay a lot of taxes. We've been here for six generations. And you guys are here bickering. You can't do this. You want to solve this. Well, look at us. We've been up here asking you for help. You guys don't do nothing. Can you talk about timelines? And you're right, when you go up for, uh, reelection stuff like that, that's when you're gonna have to voice our vote. Cause you guys talk about what you're doing, but you can't even help. You're, you're citizens here and we pay taxes dollars. So what's going on? Who, what's the joke? You guys talk about how much problems you have, but you can't even solve our little problem. And then that's the law, but you can't follow the law. No justice.
María Valdez? Mayor de Los Welleros speakers for this idea. Ms. Rodriguez?
You know, um, and you're right. You're absolutely right. We're bickering because policies are broken and we need to fix it. And if we can't fix ourselves, then it's very hard to fix stuff that you guys bring to us. But on that note, what we addressed at, at, at this, uh, uh, on thirty-five is that we're, we're going to file suit so that they can-
If it passes.
If it passes, if it passes, so that they can vacate the premises. So they can no longer can use it for whatever they're using it right now. Because we understand the issues. And if, and if one of the things is, is that like I said, there's pro- processes, there's procedures. And unfortunately, it has to take its course to get to where we're now here. I know it's your time and your effort and you should be home, you know, sleeping or, or, you know, doing whatever you do. And I understand that it's your time. But one of the things is that there's a process. And we're letting you know that we're at the end of that process.
Ms. Betis?
I agree. Government never works fast enough. It's true. But by the same token, we have to afford every individual their due process and allow them to do what they need to do to bring up and, and correct whatever has been found, uh, that needs to be corrected. But by the same token, um, we need to step back and let the operational part of the city take hold. The process, the procedural part of the city to run its course. And that's what's happened. And we're at that point where it's come to us and we're not making excuses. Simply that that's the way the, the processes, the ordinances, that's how they work. Is it fast? No. But on the contrary, and, and if it had, if it were me, I would like to afford, I would want to be afforded the same criticism. To be able to do what I need to do. And so just like you're voicing your concern, the individual has, uh, Mr. Gandera has had ample time to address the issues. That hasn't happened. So now we take the, the, the next course of action. And that's where we're at right now. Thank you.
Ms. Villalobos? And I, I just want to address the residents. We are here to protect you, the citizens, every single one of you. And there's a, there's a left side and a right side, unfortunately. And we do have to wait like Mr. Betis had mentioned. I wish I had a magic wand and make it all go away immediately. Unfortunately, we have to wait for the process to, to happen. I apologize for tonight, but I think it needed to happen. Like most families, sometimes you talk about it and you iron it out and tomorrow we'll be friends again. But, um, and I, I wanted to apologize for that. But we are concerned. We are doing our due diligence and we have to provide that due diligence to both sides, unfortunately. That's the way it works. And, uh, and, and the other thing is, I, I believe one of you mentioned that we weren't at the hearing and we apologize, but we are not allowed. So without, we're just not allowed. We wish we could be there, but, uh, taking sides would not, uh, sit well when you're a politician. Uh, for, for legal reasons. And I hope you understand. Thank you.
René Rodríguez?
This is to approve the, the, uh, to file the, 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 the suit. Okay. Aye.
Cicer Navarres?
Yes.
Ralph Kuran?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
And if we could add to that and if everybody agrees ASAP, as soon as possible, please. Thank you. Yes.
Moving back to item number twelve, public hearing of an ordinance to amend chapter six buildings and construction of the code of ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas by adding a new article five, third-party service providers to authorize qualified third-party service providers to conduct plan review inspection services. Nine fifty-seven, public hearing is now open.
Mr. Adalto?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, Councilpeople. My name is Ray Adalto. I'm the Executive Vice President for the El Paso Association of Builders. And the audience with me tonight is Sal Masut, our Government Affairs and incoming Vice President. Uh, our incoming President, uh, Edgar Garcia, and our current President, Sergio Cortez. We're here because we're here in support of third-party. Uh, we are here to help the city of Socorro with what's coming. And, uh, it looks like, uh, a lot of great things are coming to the city. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity that we've had to discuss this with, uh, at length, by the way, with two very professional individuals that you have in your employ, Mike Medina and, uh, Job DeRazas. They've been excellent to, to work with. We hope to continue that work and we're here to tell you that whatever we can do as an association to, uh, move forward on third-party will help you tremendously. Uh, we have over fourteen years of experience with third-party in El Paso. Uh, it's there to help the, uh, the department, not to replace anybody, uh, but to get things moving because you're about to be inundated, uh, with all the, with all the, uh, construction work that you already see, uh, happening. And so as, as we, as we stand here, uh, you have our full support. Uh, we are grateful again to, uh, Mr. Medina, uh, to, to make it available to us to help you all. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
I have a question that maybe can be answered during the second reading. Um, would there be anything, um, disqualifying any of the third-party service providers if they have some sort of, uh, interconnection with the builders or the developers that are, that they're going to be inspecting? I mean, I would hope so. I think that makes sense. Um, I'm just wondering if, if that's addressed. Thank-
Nine fifty-nine, public hearing is now closed. Item number thirteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend chapter six buildings and construction of the code of ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas by adding a new article five, third-party service providers to authorize qualified third-party service providers to conduct plan review inspection services.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Villalobos?
Mr. Martinez, I, I, I recognize some of the gentlemen up here. Know them very little because we're in the same, uh, they're builders. I'm a Realtor. So, um, should I, uh, excuse myself from this item? No? Okay, thank you.
Good evening again, Mike Medina. I'm the City Planner. Uh, a bit of a history is that, uh, I actually came before this body twice uh, to try to enable the city to hire a third-party to help us, uh, with plan checking and also inspections. Uh, however, we were not successful in attracting the, the need for the city. So the other opportunity through certain codes that previous bodies have adopted, uh, it gives us the enabling language to have, uh, developers hire the third-party through their mechanisms. So essentially is that part of the ordinance, it does prescribe qualifications of such third-party vendors. Uh, we have to vet them. Uh, and I believe there was a question in terms of any conflicts of interest. Uh, certainly they hire them, we vet them. Uh, with regard to any, uh, inspections that our, uh, officials or inspectors have, uh, if there are, I believe, three violations, uh, then that third-party is no longer afforded the opportunity to work with that developer.
So, yes, there is a mechanism in place.
Yes, sir. And ordinance does spell out everything.
Yeah, motion to approve, right, was the motion?
Yes.
René Rodríguez is absent. Cicer Navarres?
Yes.
Ralph Kuran?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Eni Ban, Colón Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number fourteen, public hearing of an ordinance to amend chapter four animals, section four dash one definitions and add a new section four dash thirty-one, third-party animal control to grant enforcing authority to the TWA animal control. Ten oh-two, public hearing is now open. Ten oh-two, public hearing is now closed. Item number fifteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend chapter four animals, section four dash one definitions and add a new section four dash thirty-one, third-party animal control to grant enforcing authority to the TWA animal control.
Motion to approve as read? Second.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number sixteen, discussion on action to approve the unaudited financial reports for October two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number seventeen, discussion on action to approve a proposal to create the position of police recruit for the police department and to authorize the city manager or her designee to execute the service agreement and other documents necessary with the El Paso Community College Law Enforcement Academy.
Motion to approve or discussion?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Dave Burton, Chief of Police for the city of Socorro. Um, so Human Resources is gonna come up here following this and, uh, present you with the job description of police recruit, recruit. Uh, but in the meantime, I just wanted to go over why we thought that, uh, this was a good step for the police department to take. Um, presently, our hiring calls for T-Calls certified police officers only. Um, that limits our pool of candidates. Uh, and we have to be competitive with, uh, some of the larger municipalities as far as, uh, employee benefits and/or pay scales. And that kind, that does handicap us, uh, because we just can't meet, uh, some of that, uh, some of that requirement. Uh, in the establishment of a police recruit, what we're looking to do is sponsor them to attend a police academy. In this case, it would be our local, um, El Paso Community College Law Enforcement Academy. Uh, originally, we were looking at, uh, as far away as Midland, uh, Police Academy. But after talking with this staff here, it makes sense to keep it local. So we would pay them as a city employee to be a police recruit for us. Uh, they would not have a permit until they completed the academy. Now, part two of this is there a contract that comes along with it. Uh, number one is that we promise to pay your tuition, but if you should fail out of that law enforcement academy, then you are responsible to reimburse the city of Socorro. And number two is upon completion of the police academy, you owe the city of Socorro three years of service. Um, so that gives us a base of new police officers then that, uh, will not leave us in a year. Unfortunately, that, that has been a pattern here, uh, very short term. Uh, so at least this way we have a three-year, and I thought that was a fair amount based on the, the cost of the academy, which is presently thirty-three hundred dollars for us. Um, so, uh, given approximately a thousand dollars a year, eleven hundred dollars a year, I thought that was a fair term to, uh, to put in place for three years of, of service.
Ms. Betis?
Chief, quick question. What would a typical police recruit do in the course of a day?
So police recruit, so it's mostly classroom. Uh, it's broken into five phases. The current law enforcement training academy requires you to complete seven hundred and eighty-four hours of training. Uh, that's approximately six months in length. And phase one is basic introduction to law, penal code, um, uh, occupational code, uh, alcohol, tobacco, firearms. Uh, so they're gonna run the gamut. And then by the time they get into the fifth phase, that's all practical type exercises for them. Um, what, and as an aside to this, um, I was recently asked to be part of the, uh, Law Enforcement Community College Advisory Board, which, uh, will take place sometime next month when I become a permanent member. But that also allows me then to provide information as far as what the s- police departments need from the recruits upon exiting. So I can add to, or suggest to add, or take away from the curriculum depending on, uh, what the needs are that we're seeing as chiefs. And obviously, I, I communicate with the, with the smaller, uh, departments as far as chiefs are concerned because we're all in the same boat when it comes to trying to hire and then retain these officers.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number eighteen, discussion on action to approve a job description for a police recruit.
Motion to approve or discussion?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so the job description you have before you is regarding the item that we just approved. So that's just the job description for the recruit, um, that you have in front of you. Do you all have any question?
I, yeah, I, I, only because I, I don't see it right off the bat, but is there, I guess, a, a background check of some sort?
Yes, they, they still will have to follow all, um, basic requirements. They will have to go through the background check, the, the polygraph, their psych test, uh, and evaluation. So the same basic requirements as we would the normal-
Okay.
When hiring an officer.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion on action to approve a part-time job description for our, an art instructor, a hundred percent grant-funded and ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Motion to approve or discussion? Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, El Paso del Norte has awarded a grant, a hundred percent salary for an art instructor. And this is a job description that we had implemented while we applied for the grant. So now we're just, um, asking for approval in order for us to be able to fill that position.
Awesome.
And this is from El Paso del Norte.
Renan Rodriguez is absent, please turn around.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Order number twenty, discussion on action to approve a part-time job description for a, for an art program coordinator, grant-funded at a hundred percent and ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Uh, this is the same, uh, El Paso del Norte that is doing the coordinator, also was funded through, through them, so we're just writing the job description that was actually placed on the grant, right?
But now we're making it official. I'm sorry, for those that are here and are not reading what we're reading, what would, uh, these two posi- well, I, I guess we passed, but, uh, the coordinator would, would do, what it, their daily jobs would do?
So they are, um, part-time positions, um, if we're going back to item nineteen, for the art instructor, it is a part-time position, um...
We're not on that, we're not on that item, just, so just focus on item number twenty.
Um, for the art program coordinator, grant-funded as well, part-time position, um, they will be, under general supervision, developing, organizing, and coordinating community programs, um, with project initiatives for after-school programs, um, that we will be starting, um, in, at the end of January. They will be having Tuesdays and Thursdays, um, afternoon classes, uh, from three forty-five to five forty-five, and then as well through the summer, um, ending in November, so they are after-school programs for the students or anybody that wishes to come through, through to the Center at Rio Vista, and that will be available to them.
So it's a youth and culture program and arts and culture program designed to engage disconnected youth in Socorro in high-quality after-school and intersection summer programming.
Awesome. Mr. Perez?
So then where will the artist and coordinator be housed?
At our recreation center. Cause there's different classrooms, uh, here at Rio Vista.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Order number twenty-one, discussion on action to approve amendment to the job description and title from records clerk to senior records clerk with a salary of thirty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars with sixty cents.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
Good evening, mayor and council, uh, so this job description is coming, uh, our current records clerk is actually doing a little bit more, just like the property and evidence, it's just the property and evidence handles all of the actual property that they collect while they're under investigation. The records clerk submits all of the documentation into the, so there was a, um, you know, with this new chief coming in and assessing, there was a disconnect with the job description and the pay, correct? So we had to justify that, and the impact is about four thousand dollars, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars difference, um, that you're just paying more, we're, we're budgeted, we just need to increase our budget by four thousand, and due to the salary savings this year, that would be a problem.
So then...
Mr. Perez?
So then, um, when you're on salary, and maybe I, I got this backwards, I can't remember. When you're on salary, are you exempt or non-exempt?
When you're on salary, you're exempt.
Okay, so then why, why is this person non-exempt?
It's an hourly, it's an hourly position.
So then, so then, but salary, that's, I guess, my, just my only thing, salary, salary to me, I guess, and I'm, if I'm wrong, means something else.
Okay, so salary is seventeen dollars and seventy-two an hour?
So that would be the pay scale?
Correct, so it's, it's, it's the salary, that's how much you're gonna pay them an hour.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I'm providing a salary of the impact of the whole year.
Okay.
So I multiply that by twenty, eighty hours in a year, and that's kinda where we come up with the salary.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Order number twenty-two, discussion on action to approve a job description for census community outreach coordinator.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
Good evening, mayor and council, this is actually also a hundred percent funded, um, job description, and this is from the HOG Foundation, and we've already received payment from them, right? So all we're doing is just providing the, uh, job description in order for us to be able to start hiring.
That's a decent amount.
I'm sorry?
That's a good amount?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Just for the re- just so...
So we're really pushing our census, so this is just gonna help us, so we're gonna be very busy this coming year.
Mr. Perez?
Just so that, uh, the salary, uh, I guess would be the fifty-six thousand, is that correct?
This is fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
And it is a seasonal, um, so it's, it's seasonal, it ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Okay, I get you. It's a fifteen, but still fifteen dollars an hour is okay?
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes. Order number twenty-three, discussion on action to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Socorro and the El Paso Vet Center to offer free services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, um, the Vet Center has approached us to use space, they're, uh, asking for facility requests to offer free services to all the veterans in the community out of the Chiaupodaca Community Center, um, it's completely free of charge and HIPAA complaint.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Order number twenty-four, discussion on action to approve the twenty-twenty, Fourth of July fireworks contract with Big Dog Pyro.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, mayor and council, um, as Ms. Rodarte said, twenty-twenty is gonna be a very busy year for us. We have been contacted by our usual vendor because they are running out of techs to do shows, so they're asking us if we could make a decision on if we'd like to return as a customer and what day we would like to do. Next year, uh, Fourth of July will be on a Saturday. It will be the same place that we've, uh, previously done it, which is at Quiggar Park, so there is a...
But if we do it on a Saturday, it's at a higher cost.
It is at a higher cost because it's the actual event day.
But Fourth of July is Fourth of July. Yeah.
So I wanted to go ahead and bring this to council for discussion to get different input and get ideas on what we wanted to do for the budget. Um, typically, it's seventeen thousand that we do, and then we also go out for sponsorships for that.
Ms. Yellos? Okay, so two questions, one, um, are we going, we're, we're still gonna go out and, uh, try to see if we get sponsors, right?
Yes.
Um, a lot of the businesses, because I know them, they've asked, why doesn't the City of Socorro ask? Is it, do you guys call every vendor here or just the ones on your list?
We call the ones that are on the list that have participated in the past, and then when we also put the flyers up, we've contacted managers or sometimes the actual employees that work there, but we're always trying to outsource and get more vendors, so if you know of anyone, please go ahead and let us know, we can definitely contact them.
And I will turn over that list, okay? And then the other question, the other thing I need to tell you is, last year, the fireworks were phenomenal. I loved them, but they were a little bit too low, um, they were falling on our laps.
No, and that's the wind.
That was the wind, okay.
It's called interactive.
Yeah.
And actually, um...
Three D, four D, okay.
It was a very immersive experience. Um, but our chief of police, um, is also very, um, aware of that, and as, actually is working with me to maybe create a different holding site for them, to create more of a safety barrier for our, um, customers and constituents.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perez?
Quick question, um, how much more is it on Saturday versus in the other day? Six thousand is it, six thousand?
We do have, we have options, um, in lowering the amount of time that we do the show, in whether we wanna upgrade the show or not, and on the day of the show. So right now, she has saved, uh, a day Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the third, the fourth, or the fifth, for the City of Socorro, since we've been loyal customers. She did say she could hold it until after the meeting for us to make a decision. I also wanna note that we did also contact other vendors, one of them, one of them did come back, that's, uh, a little bit local by Midland, they're completely booked, that was their official response to our quote request. We do have one local, but we compete with, um, El Paso Chihuahuas as well as one of the local churches.
I think that if we have it on Saturday, our turnout will be...
Even better.
Yeah, so much better.
Ridiculous. Is there anything you can, that they can do about, I'm sorry, is there anything that they can do about going down our, the list that we do have for vendors, so we could get more sponsors?
Oh, yeah, totally, um, we can, um, we're actually already starting our package because Fourth of July is a really, um, critical time for other agencies, so we wanna hit them early in getting those sponsorship dollars. The fiscal year that just started, we've already hit twelve thousand dollars, and that was just through, um, Harvest Fest- I'm sorry, Bright Farm and Winter Festival, so, um, we're confident we can get that, that number down.
So at this time, I'll like to go ahead and, in my motion to say that we select July Fourth, twenty twenty, as the date of the event.
Second.
And use the, and use, uh, Big Dog Pyro.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Order number twenty-five, discussion on action on approving engaging with SBNG certified public accountants for auditing fiscal year two thousand nineteen in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, mayor and council, so this is just engaging our, um, auditors for this fiscal year that just ended, so we're just trying to get a, um, start on that, so, but before we do that, we do have to engage and, and sign the letter, so I have to bring it to council.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Order number twenty-six, discussion on action to adopt resolution five eighty-nine to appoint city planner Michael Medina to the El Paso Central Appreso District Board of Directors, term begins January first, twenty twenty, and runs through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Wow. Good evening, mayor and council, actually, we were approached by the El Paso Central Appreso, um, I guess their appointments are ending December of this year, so they wanted to see who would we, uh, want to appoint i- in our entity, and I recommended Mr. Medina just because he's, he's, um, very well versed with land use and, so I think having a voice within that board would, would really benefit us.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Order number twenty-seven, discussion on action to direct staff and city attorney to hire a third-party to review and provide recommendations to city council on possible amendments to the city charter.
Do we have, so, I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. Just real quick, guys, this has been a challenge for all of us, I think we realize that, and, um, for, for that reason, I have decided to ask, uh, if we could possibly, uh, hire somebody to help us with, with the charter. I think it's a very important document, I think we've proven that we really need a professional to come in and put in the work and the hours, and so this, this is why I'm asking for approval, thank you. Mr. Perez?
Are, are there organizations that do that? I, I'm...
I think we would have to go through, uh, maybe seek, like, legal, uh, someone that can go over a documentation. I've, I've Googled and gone through different charters, cause TML provides you, like, a template, regardless of the entity that we go, they're still gonna need feedback from council, so they're still gonna have to be workshops, because they, they need to receive your feedback to see what changes. Um, one thing that I also explore with Ms. Colombi Yellos is, why not turn it into a Word document and then bring you the sections that we're working on, just like very small sections, already printed, and then we can work one at a time at every council meeting.
I think that's a good idea.
Mr. Perez?
That way, if you forget your charter or you don't, we're just working on that small section.
Can, uh, all, well, if, if we were to all bring our computers and then have access to Google Drive or Google Docs, and then we can, we can edit as we're going and it automatically saves, and then we just, uh, that way, you know, whatever we... And I don't know if, and I don't know if we, I mean, it, it captures our thoughts as we're going, and then that'll allow staff to go back and say, okay, you can't do this or, you know, for, for legal review. I don't know if that, if that would be...
Correct, so, as, as we're preparing a section, and I'm saying, like, two small sections, if there's a long section, we'll only work on that section, and then after we go through it here, then it goes through legal for them to approve it, and then it's ready. This document is time-sensitive, just because it's an election, you're next year and it has to go to our voters, so we do need to start working on that, and I feel that, cause I've already put it in a Word document and I've cut, you know, like, okay, section one, but we would have to start from the very beginning, because going through the notes of that everybody's submitting, it's a little confusing, um, so just bringing... Not everybody's are confusing, but I, I feel that if we do section by section, we should be, okay, and it's not gonna take us a lot of time, because it's a very small section that we're gonna deal with, and I can send you that section, uh, when we send out the agenda, so you can review it.
So you're basically thrusting us into the twenty-first century.
I'm, I'm away.
You're thrusting us into the twenty-first century.
Mr. Perez?
Jim, you don't feel confident that you could provide us the, uh, legal information that we need for, or do you feel that we need to go out, out for a third-party attorney?
I can answer your first question. And, and I know it's probably disapplicable, that may sound like self-interest. Plenty of people come to my office, visit in front of my, my desk, and AEW, that's why I'm seeing, and I'm, can we help you? No, I mean, I couldn't do that for you, but I know eight lawyers down the street who do that every single day of their life, and they're just not better at it, and it's gonna cost them, let's go see them if you do. You know, that's, that's mandatory with the license, and so if I felt that way about this, yeah, I would tell you, you need, you'd be faster, more efficient, less expensive, go to someone else. I honestly, I can't tell you that in conscience, and part of it is because, and I think, I think I found this, there isn't outside of lawyers, there's really no other resource to go to where you can, kind of, get this kind of information, even though maybe, but even then, it would be back with their legal department, they won't do the whole thing for you.
Yeah.
Um, so you're, you're gonna end up with lawyers, they're gonna charter, and more importantly, they're gonna have to work the charter, and just because of, you know, you've been here for six years, yeah, I mean, off the top of my head, I could literally give you a dozen things that I know that, that are problematic in the charter, and so I actually think it's gonna be, you're gonna get a better product at less cost if you keep it in-house and let us bird-dog it and, and this is a lot of this, it's absolutely correct, the, the critical part is, man, I can tell you what I think the obvious flaws are in it, but a lot of them are just kind of policy direction, it's like, well, that's a decision point, I mean, are we going left or are we going right, going down the middle, I don't wanna call it, you just, we just need to do that in council.
Okay.
So...
What are your thoughts, just the section by section? I think your idea is great.
I agree.
Would you like to amend your motion, Mrs. Yellos, or who made the motion?
What was my motion?
Hiring a third-party.
So no hiring of a third-party, we will con, we will have Mrs. Rodarte?
Provide, so we'll, we'll start working on section by section.
City manager? Right, we'll have the city manager provide us, um, section per, per section, right?
Electronic chunks.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, we don't delete it, we just, um, part of the motion, right?
Because the motion is to fire it up.
Oh, well, we, we're amending the motion, right? Correct?
I, I, I'm gonna suggest with drawing that motion, instead of moving to, to follow the procedure that, the adopted procedure going forward that is the, the city manager described.
What, what he said.
And we do have a speaker for that item.
Oh.
Do we have a second?
And do we have a second?
Second.
Just kidding. I, I, um, I don't know how many people would be interested, um, I think it, I, in my happy imaginary world, you could post this online and have comments from the public, um, sort of like Textdot does on their, um, Textdot plans and, and road crews or whatever. Um, I know that I'd be all over it, writing my comments, I'm not so sure how many other people from the public might get, I don't know, you might be surprised, there might be people who wanna write in the comments, um, their ideas, how the charter should change. Not only that, but if, if people do decide to engage, those are the same voters that are gonna be voting, and so if they felt like they're a part of what, um, you're gonna be changing, that might help, um, but I'm glad you guys are going in the direction you're going, and what I was gonna get up and say was, put a cap, if you were going to hire a third-party, is there any way we can put a cap, no offense, on Mr. Martinez, um, for this, for this, this work, that's gonna have to entail a lot of time, I'm sure. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
And I have asked, believe it or not, people that I know, if they wanted to be part of this. All I get is, I'll get back to you, so, yes.
Item number twenty-eight, discussion on action on charter amendment, Sections seven, eight, nine, pages twenty-eight through thirty-nine for the two thousand twenty election.
I'm actually deleting that one.
Motion to delete because we're on the start.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to delete items twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one?
Motion made.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. Aye.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Yes.
Ten thirty, meeting adjourned.
All right.